Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. We have five members and our student representative present. I do declare a quorum. At this time, board member Linda Murray will lead us in the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have approval of this evening's agenda. Is there a motion, please?
I move.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any discussion of the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We have five affirmative votes with a student member concurring. Approval of the minutes?
Mrs. Williams, I move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, October 6, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the closed meeting of Tuesday, October 6? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We have five affirmative votes, unanimous. Those minutes stand approved.
Mrs. Williams, I also move for the approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, October 6, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Are there any additions or corrections to the business meeting minutes of Tuesday, October 6? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor? We have five affirmative votes. Student member concurs, motion carries, so our minutes have been approved. This time we'll have public comment. I have on my list one speaker for this evening, Mr. Neil Becker. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, President Williams, or sorry, do you have to go over?
Good evening. Mr. Becker, you know the policy, and speakers have five minutes. Mr. Bickford is our timer, so he has his—
He has my cards this time.
So whenever you're ready, Mr. Becker.
Thank you. Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Michael, board members and staff. First, let me start by saying thank you. I know a couple of the elected board members were able to visit at least one school this week and/or within the last two weeks, and I know the staff members appreciated the opportunity to engage in some discussions about the reality of life teaching through the pandemic. Tonight I'll address three issues: funding, safety, and the return to learn stages. First, I must address a recent article in the Herald Mail that cited an offer to hold the BOE harmless when it comes to funding and WCPS enrollment. While I commend Commissioner Minnelschmidt for his desire to discuss funding for public education perennially, even before Commissioner Minnelschmidt was elected, the county commissioners have been labeled low effort by the state of Maryland. In the midst of a pandemic, WCPS has remained committed to educating every child enrolled. The commitment of the school system and every educator employed should be matched by the commitment of the delegation and the commissioners to fully fund WCPS. Now's not the time to barter. Let's continue the discussions to ensure our students and their educational opportunities are not jeopardized by the lack of funding in the future. In addition to funding, the return to learn plan should be implemented safely, and that's a timely issue tonight, just as it was in the October 6 meeting. Students and staff must remain priority number one for WCPS and our entire community. I know every employee from CES in every building is working diligently to ensure the safety of the students enrolled and the staff employed. Let's continue that. Educators and their family members may have underlying health conditions, but they open the doors to the classrooms, to the schools, to the school buses daily to meet the guidelines established by WCPS and MSDE. Keep a careful eye on the safety of all students and the staff, and that is essential as we move through the plan. Also regarding the plan, unlike some other counties, WCPS didn't ask for volunteers who feel safe returning to the classroom. WCPS didn't offer staff the opportunity to engage in distance learning once stage two was announced, and now we're in stage three, and all staff, regardless of extenuating circumstances, reported to work as they were mandated to do so. The vast majority of your employees are working, are working hard, unlike other jurisdictions. We're blessed not to be challenged to fill hundreds of vacancies, as some neighboring counties are doing and the challenge they're facing right now. As a system, let's consider all options when it comes to opportunities for students and staff. As we experience a shortage of qualified substitutes, remote teaching should remain a consideration and a topic of discussion in the school system. Negotiating these options in addition to the evolving virtual learning opportunities via anytime learning should not be discounted. We have many options. And we are one week into stage three. School staff are doing all they can to execute the return to learn plan by planning engaging lessons while juggling this new creation of concurrent teaching. WCPS must maintain a slow, measured approach as it contemplates stage 3B or stage 4. Listen to administrators, teachers, and support personnel throughout the process. Let's continue to be a team and even strengthen that team before a rollout's determined and publicized. Let's be transparent, and finally, I reiterate, don't move too fast, which could and really will jeopardize the progress we're making. Together, we can execute a plan safely and effectively and ensure a safe environment for all the employees and the students and WCPS. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Prue, do we have anyone else out there? I don't have anyone else who has signed up. Okay. At this time, we'll have board member response to public comment. Colleagues, does anyone care to respond?
I would just like to say, on the point of Mr. Becker, I know that some of my board members were able to get out to schools. I was able to attend four schools, and I was very impressed with our staff and the hard work that they're putting in to make sure that their day is very productive for the students in the classroom and in a virtual, on the computers. Yet I know that they are feeling a little overwhelmed. I'm sure some of them feel a lot of that. I only saw professional people in our classrooms, very professional, and I applaud them for that. The staff that's working in the classroom also, I mean, in the school, the custodians that are doing the cleaning jobs, you know, between classes, it was very professional, and everyone was very diligent on doing their jobs. So I just would like to let the staff know, if you weren't able to go, I was there, and it was a very good time for me to go in and see that, and the staff were very appreciative to what they were doing. So on to Mr. Neil's, Becker's note about staff being appreciative to us being there. I was very appreciative of being able to be there, too.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Mrs. Murray.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I have not been able to visit schools, and I'm sorry about that, but I have been sitting in on some of my grandchildren's online classes just to see how they're working, and I'm very impressed with what I'm seeing. The teachers are doing an excellent job with the online, the virtual teaching, and I can't say enough good about that. And also, my neighbors weighed in. They said that their daughter is all virtual, and she is on the distinguished honor roll. She is loving it. She is doing a great job, and they can't say enough good things about her teachers as well. So thank you, teachers, for everything that you're doing.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Anyone else care to speak? Okay, thank you. We have no old business this evening, so we'll move to new business. Our first item for consideration under new business this evening is the consent agenda. And we have Scott Bakhtel, Supervisor of Purchasing, here to present. Good evening, Mr. Bak—
President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. Tonight I have five items for review. These items were reviewed by our purchasing review committee and are being recommended for approval, and staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bakhtel. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the awards renewals and procurements for snow removal to Potomac Grounds Care LLC, Clean Cuts Lawn Care LLC, East Coast Landscaping and Excavating, and Hartz Landscaping and Snow Removal at the rates listed. Elementary Science Virtual Learning Student Kit to Taylor Science Materials Center at a cost of $93,197.23. Security Equipment and Service Renewal to Atlantic Security System at the unit prices listed. Flooring Renewal to Carpet Gallery and Dorsey Brothers at the unit prices listed. Chevrolet, Nissan, and non OEM parts and repair labor renewal to various vendors at the unit prices listed.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Your motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any questions for Mr. Bakhtel? Any discussion?
The only thing I had was just, could you, just because we are living in this new world of virtual learning, could you expand upon the elementary science kits and how they'll be used?
Go ahead, Dr. Willow.
Good evening. Well, these kits are specifically for our marking period two and marking period three curriculum guides. So earlier in the year, we authorized and we approved, and we've pushed them out to schools for Module One or marking period one. It's the same experiences that our students would have if they were in the classroom. These are virtual kits that students can take home and participate in some of the hands-on learning that they would normally experience if they were in the classroom. We'll also be able to use these should students return in later stages, and therefore every student would have an individual kit and therefore not need to share.
Thanks, thank you.
Anyone else?
I would just like to say something on that, Mr. Bak— on those kits that we had, were they the same ones that we saw in committee?
Yes, Mr. Gessford, they're the ones that we saw for Module One, that first part of the year. Now we're ordering ahead as we get into marking period two and three, but it's the same concept that we reviewed with curriculum instruction, just some different materials that now go with those additional labs that we'll have later on in the year.
Good, yeah.
All right, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of this evening's consent agenda, please raise your right hand for approval. Right, we have five affirmative votes with the student member concurring. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bakhtel.
Thank you.
Our next item under new business is consideration, the change of check signatories. Mr. Brandenburg, our Executive Director of Finance presenting.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Michael. You have before you tonight a request to make a change in the signatories on accounts necessitated by a change in assignment of one of the prior signatories. We like to have three on all the accounts, and because our accounts require two signatures, and we just have a third one in case there's someone absent or something when we need someone, the accounts that are affected are listed on the cover sheet.
Thank you. There a motion?
President Williams, I move to approve the following changes in check signatories: remove April Bishop and add Peggy Pugh.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any questions for Mr. Brandenburg? Any discussion? All right, we'll move to the vote. The vote is on approval of the change of check signatories. All those in favor? We have five affirmative votes, and the student member concurs. Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Brandenburg.
Very much.
And that takes us to the superintendent's report, Dr. Michael.
Thank you, President Williams. This time I'd like to ask Dr. Willow to give us an update on our consolidated strategic Every Student Succeeds Act Plan. We want to make sure the board's well informed of that, and this plan gets submitted to the state. So, Dr. Willow?
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. The Every Student Succeeds Act was the reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act in 2015, and in 2019 was the first year for our ESA consolidated plan. Components of this year's ESA consolidated plan are different. The state has allowed us to submit many of the parts of the return to learn plan in lieu of submitting a brand-new ESA plan. This year's ESA plan had the following sections: a needs assessment, focus area, gifted and talented programming, teacher induction and mentoring, and our titling programs. As always, we look at consideration of specific student groups. Part of our ESA plan is reviewing academic performance data on state assessments for student groups in order to ensure that all of our students are making academic growth. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the state did not administer MCAP, HSA, or MISA assessments during the spring of 2020. As outlined in our return to learn plan on pages 37 and 38, each local school system is administering local assessments for math and English to determine present levels of student performance. As part of our strategic needs assessment, we identify strengths and we identify challenges. We look at priority areas, and we put a plan in place to address these priorities. This year, we had a number of ways to gather input from our stakeholders. Some of those ways are listed on this slide. Again, this year, we were able to use the input we gathered as part of our return to learn plan. So the return to learn plan took place throughout the summer, and we also had the continuity of learning plan that we were able to use throughout the spring as well. There are two primary focus areas. One of them centers around academic achievement for math, and the other centers around academic achievement for English reading language arts. Our focus is to continue to provide excellent initial instruction. This summer, we had teachers and administrators contribute to refining our curriculum. We provide opportunities for teacher collaboration and professional development for our staff. We continue to use formative assessment to guide instruction and accelerate learning. This year, we have a new assessment platform that will provide teachers with immediate feedback on how students are performing. The most important component of any assessment is understanding the purpose and having a plan for meaningful action based on the data results. We will continue to work with students who have gaps in either math, reading, or both. All means all in Washington County. Other areas of our focus plan for ESA include access and completion to a well-rounded curriculum, college and career readiness, student attendance, health and safety, and technology. In this year's plan, we'll continue to offer academic support for students that need it, support our Title I schools, continue to offer professional learning opportunities for our staff. We're also going to be continuing to focus on some of those mental health components, such as social emotional learning, expanding our mental health service providers at our school level, expanding into for additional training for trauma-informed practices, and as Mr. Jacoby presented to the board two weeks ago, we'll continue to expand on our restorative practices. So all of that is components, are components of our ESA plan, and at this time, I'll answer any questions that the board may have on our ESA plan.
Thank you, Dr. Willow. Board members, questions? Don't seem to have any questions, Dr. Willow.
Thank you, Dr. Willow, for your work pulling that together, and Dr. Pugh for giving Dr. Willow a tutorial on how to transition from our gigantic plan to the consolidated plan to the new plan yet for this year. So we appreciate all the work, staff, teachers, supervisors, content specialists, and people that have pulled all that information together. I have just a couple other things. As Mr. Becker indicated, we're a week and one day into stage three. I, too, want to thank all of our teachers, our ESP, our administrators that are working so hard to help our students be successful. I try to spend every day at least in one school, and I pretty much consistently hear some of the same phrases every day, you know, "It's not exactly what we signed up for, it's not what we ideally want to do, but we're excited to have some children back, we're all doing the best we can, everyone's working extremely hard. When can I have all my kids back?" A whole variety of things like that is what I get the opportunity to hear as I go out into schools. So we don't have a date yet for stage four. We're obviously following our metrics here in the county. Want to make sure that we have stage three under our belt well. Likely to be sending a survey, I hope, by the end of next week, the staff described a little bit about what's happening with stage three, what's working, what's not working. If we move into stage four, how many children can you manage in your room at a time? Will an A-day, B-day actually work as we've described? What other type of things would we have to prepare for? I am pleased to report that quite a bit of the materials that the board approved a couple weeks ago have already started to arrive from a technology expansion standpoint, and I think those are items that are going to help with our concurrent teaching model. So we're going to continue to work with our staff, work with our students, do the very best we can during the COVID-19 pandemic. I do want to recognize that this week is Character Counts Week. There are those six pillars of character counts: trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. And I know it's a little bit different way that we've had to celebrate this week than in the past, but we certainly encourage families, teachers at school, in the community, that we all practice these characters, characteristics for character counts. Also, this is National School Bus Safety Week. The theme this year is Red Means Stop. So when you see those flashing red lights, please stop. When you see that stop arm come out, please stop to protect our children. Also, another recognition this month is also National Principals Month. So thank your principal, whether you're a parent, student, teacher, ESP. We appreciate all the work of our leadership out in the schools, especially again during the COVID-19 pandemic. So we appreciate our principals and the hard work they do, as well as our teachers and ESP and other administrators in the county. And Mrs. Williams, with that, that concludes my comments.
All right, Dr. Michael, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to personnel action. Dr. Pugh.
Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Michael, members of the board. There were a number of staff changes discussed today in closed session, and I'm here today to ask for your approval.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Is there a motion?
Prove the accepted personnel report.
Thank you. Mr. Stauffer, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any questions for Dr. Pugh? All right, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approval of the personnel action discussed earlier this afternoon. We have five affirmative votes. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Pugh.
Thank you.
Okay, reports to the board. Board member committee reports. Do we have any chair people that would like to report? Mrs. Murray, go ahead.
Yes. Excuse me. Curriculum and Instruction will be meeting at Tech High next Tuesday at 4:00, and we are going to tour the new programs there.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one else has met?
Finance meets next Tuesday, right after the facilities meeting. So next Tuesday at 9:00 AM.
9:00 AM? Thank you. That must mean you're at 8:00 AM.
Yep. We are. Next week.
Facilities, next week at 8:00 AM. Okay, all right. Thank you for those. Did you want to report on anything from the Legislative Committee?
No.
No? Okay. So under miscellaneous business, we'll move to that. We have future agenda items. You should have a list of those. With upcoming in November, teacher recruitment, hiring, and new teacher induction. 2019, 2020 SAT and ACT data report, the Technology Department update, 2020, 2021 student enrollment and free and reduced eligibility rates, and the school safety update. Then in the new year, in February, we have a legislative briefing on the 2020 Maryland Legislative Session, another briefing on March 2nd, another legislative briefing on April 6th, and another legislative briefing on May 4th. So February, March, April, and May, we'll be hearing from Mrs. Cade, who is our legislative representative in Annapolis. If you have any suggestions for agenda items, please let a member of the Agenda Planning Committee know. That would be Dr. Michael, Dr. Pugh, Mr. Stauffer, or me. And we'll see what we can do about getting your interested item on the agenda. That brings us to board member comments. Mr. Bakum, would you like to begin down there?
I have nothing for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Murray.
Yes, I just want to thank again Dr. Michael, the senior staff, CES staff, school staff, bus drivers, parents, everybody who's pulling together during this pandemic to educate our children. With everybody pulling together, we will come through this. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Mr. Bickford?
I agree with everything Mrs. Murray said. Also, I'd like to compliment our president, Melissa Williams, for the work she did to organize our recent MAAB conference, the Maryland Association of Board of Education. This was sort of our professional development day. We had to meet virtually this year, but it was very well attended, and she played a key role in planning for the day so that it covered many topics that are very important to all of us. It's always good to be able to see other board members and share some of our common experiences, as well as frustrations that we're dealing with, and to learn the state of education as it is in our state and nation. And one thing that I was particularly pleased about was I attended a breakout session about the importance of arts education and learned that Washington County is actually doing very well when I compare ourselves to other counties and the arts programs that we have available here. And there's actually an organization that is doing a, what they, they're doing sort of a census of arts programs, and I think we're going to actually do very well in that census. So I thought that was, that was for somebody who grew up in this area and was very enriched by the arts programs that were available as a child. It's wonderful to see that that continues to thrive. So thank you to all the staff that made that possible as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Mr. Stauffer?
I'd like to echo what Mr. Bickford just said about the conference and the MAAB conference and your good work. conference and your good work along with your colleague and planning that and everything. And I also had the chance to visit a local elementary school and observe a teacher and talk to the principal. It was at M.A.K. Dow. I liked what I saw, and I hope to get out to other schools beginning either later this week or next week.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Mr. Gessford?
I don't have anything for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. I would like to say that I echo Mrs. Murray's comments, and I, too, visited an elementary school. I attended a morning meeting and a language arts lesson in a second-grade classroom, and I was just amazed by what I saw, the hard work that the teacher was putting forth, and there was evidence of a great deal of planning. So I thank you to Ms. Lauer for inviting me, and I thank Mr. Klutz for his kind hospitality. I thank you to my colleagues who attended the MAAB conference and to our student representative who was there. I think this was the first time ever that a Washington County Board of Education student representative was able to attend a MAAB annual conference, so virtual conferences do have their benefits. So it was great to have you there, Kevin. And I have no further comments, so... Anyone else? Dr. Michael, would you like to have the final word?
Well, I hope by the end of next week that we'll actually post online a video, kind of the equivalent of a ribbon cutting of what Mrs. Murray described, the instructional team's going to see next week at Tech High, so we're excited to do that. I believe we're starting to film tomorrow, so I'm excited to share another new opportunity here in Washington County next week. I think you'll be very impressed by what the curriculum committee sees. I know the, I believe the facilities committee's made it out there, maybe not, but hopefully they will.
So if there's nothing further, no one else has anything, we stand adjourned. Thank you. Are you not feeling well?